I'd rather want to see Officer Petras, who was actually the person that assisted, found that the individual had cut his arm very badly, like a sharp piece of busting suspect was transported to the ER by rescue squad and the investigation was turned over to ACQ. We did have one community event this past month. We attended the ribbon cutting ceremony. James was there, some of our chamber members. At the GOCO, it's going to open. A lot of people were there. Most of the day we were not getting that gas and things like that. Auxiliary officers donated forty-five hours of their time last month. You can see what that cost savings for the fiscal year last year, twenty-four, twenty-five. You see, they've saved the town almost twenty-one thousand dollars. And donated time to the police department in town. SVPD assisted our town maintenance folks with the street sweeping event. Wanted to give a big shout out to James for arranging that event footplace with our VDOT department. He really did all of the streets that we allied with clean Friday to the Fourth of July. And how we got them counties coming back on the fifteenth, I believe is what we said, wherever that Monday.
Fifteenth of August.
July.
Oh, July, okay.
So Jamie's done a good job with that. And I think by the time we finished up over there, it's probably right at three quarters of a dump truck load or four or five. Got all the streets. There's a lot of debris. Did you ever get a final coverage on it? We had one of our last stakeholders meeting for the July fourth events. And then I guess now might be a good time. We wanted to is to go over the July fourth calls for service. We had sixteen calls for service this past July fourth compared to sixteen calls for service last July fourth. So steady. Want to thank Jack for staying with me at the police department and actually tracking the types of calls for service that we were involved in. We had a number of assist agencies, citizens. I think we only had one real disorder in the town the whole time. No arrests were made again this year. So traffic was cleared out of the town within a foul at hour ten minutes, hour fifteen minutes. So it wasn't too bad. No major complaints, no officers were hurt, no citizens were hurt. It looked like everybody had a good time.
Anything you would do differently next year, Chief?
Yeah, so we tried it up on Harrison Street to allow residents to leave their cars there on the south of the street and not to move them until three o'clock. What I didn't really think about was traffic once that parade traffic went out of here, you've got cars going out Harrison over the Warren and then you've got cars coming down in there and you've got cars down there. So can't do it. East, West Bane Street. Now, years past, we had no parking. This year, we have three to midnight, no parking. People park there anyway. And I made sure I monitored when the traffic was coming out of there for fireworks portion of the events. And it did cause any problems. So I don't think I'm gonna have residents either move on West Main Street like it's legal. There was no, no issue.
It's vital.
I think so. We did have, I guess it was a reported four hit and runs. And it was all like in the, but they weren't real classified hit and runs. You know, people being in other cars with their car doors and leaving the scene, unit property damages and so forth. So we documented those, but overall, it was a pretty good event. Long day. Thank staff or the police department. We had about twenty-three hour, early twenty-one hour day that day. But other than that, it was pretty good.
Definitely make sure everybody, just saying, how many officers were here altogether from the town to?
So we had, we had six of our officers. We had four of the one main security officers. And then we have two of our deputies from Buckingham from evening and morning. And then we have one deputy from Savannah in the morning, getting down off our plains and.
Please make sure, I'm sure all of us can say, I want to thank you for all that.
And the one main security are a lot cheaper. And they did a very good job than what Alabama was. I think they charge a hundred dollars an hour for a ride. So we've got four officers with one main security, just under eleven hundred dollars for the evening. So we're definitely good.
Chief, I have one additional question on the stat sheet here. Do you want to go through that first or before I ask my question or? The numbers. Forgery fraud. Two calls about that. What is that about?
Orders filed.
Yeah, well, we're the specific. I know what forgery fraud is.
Well, I think the one was it was reported two months ago when we talked about the that card was lost by a customer of one of our businesses and employees. And I can't remember what they're like, anything. They.
Not within June though?
Um, that one, the one for the one fraud was.
Cause you've got two calls here in June. And I was just curious.
Yeah, I'm not sure then. I can't probably see this where it gets all blurred out. So I can't see where it's at and where it's not at. Honestly. It might have just been a report and no major event. And we have.
But if nothing comes to mind, then I guess it wasn't something we should significantly that we should take notice.
The last one that was significant, I reported out on a hoop was in May that we just avoided. That call. That was the last significant one.
I've seen a lot more in the news and I just, I'm curious if there's anything showing up in our area. I mean, clearly we're a small rural.
One of the ones that comes to mind this past month was one of the folks in the town had gotten a federal I think it was a grant scam. But folks were communicating with him by text message and he was going to get iPhone cards, five hundred, three hundred dollars every time. This was all in one day. Eleven hundred dollars in just a couple hours' time. And the folks over at the food line kind of telling you, look, this is a scam. Stop. You know, I want my money. Cause they had taken a picture of a box that said it had fifty thousand dollars in. And it was his. All he needed to do was send them this one iPhone, iPhone cards. So he sent them eleven hundred dollars and then I think a couple of days later, you know, it's coming. Send us one more three hundred dollar. And he did. Went and got another three hundred dollars and sent it to him. And he's come to my office and asked me about it. I said, you bet.
Thank you. That's unfortunate.
You're not. That's just one that comes to my mind from this past month. But I can't remember the other one.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the staff? Any other questions at all? Again, like I told you, Brian, I appreciate all the university, the previous, yes, sir, July and. I think they went very well. All right, moving on. Officer here from the chamber. Commerce, George, give us a go. You're a force, sir.
I'm losing my head anymore. I don't know where to stand. I'm just gonna stand here with my hands down.
Nowhere to hide.
I'll tell you, everybody. So we've had three events since our last meeting. Batto Festival, holiday days, Fourth of July, maybe some smaller events mixed in there too. Don't want to guarantee I've got them all, but I thought they were all successful. Javier, Melody, I did a great job on the Meredith on the Batto. That's the best show I've seen at Batto in a long time. Even as high as it was, a lot of good people having a lot of good times. I did have a question about, I've heard different things, but I just wanted to get a final say on what the situation with the posters are and being able to put a banner across twenty. Is that fixed yet or?
Not yet. One sign has an issue. So we need to get a bucket truck in.
I might know where one or three bucket trucks are. That was, that was the rumor that I've heard is that there was still an issue there. So I just wanted to make sure you that I'm, I'm willing to help out where you need on that. The, thanks again, Greg, for everything on the fourth. I've told my wife a year ago, but from the first year you took over, I know there's a big difference on being able to get out from the fourth and how long we sat.
Did it go?
Yeah. Yep. If I just listen to my wife and I try to do it, you never got the food line. If you kept on going up the lane, I know I would've been upset.
I'm glad it's not just me.
Oh, yeah, I was following a group of people that turned around and tried to come back. I was like, maybe the last one coming right here. Like I got all these other people, but all of us got turned off. Anyway, I think it was a great day.
Well, it was nice of you to acknowledge.
Moving on. We have a tough one. We members to report this month. We have the GOCO that rejoins under new ownership. Great people, great food. I encourage everybody to try it out. Definitely a little bit different taste than what we're used to. But yeah, that went great. I hope they have a successful adventure. Sue across the street has joined. And then more interestingly, I can't remember if I mentioned it last time, Amazon has joined the Chamber of Commerce. They're starting a hub, individual hub delivery system here for rural areas. So I plan on meeting with her again this week, maybe. Or I will meet this weekend and find out the details. She's getting, she's gathered information, got statistics and stuff for her boss. And then they're gonna go over that today and I'll meet with her after that to see what all the specifics are would be for our town. But basically, they want to make many delivery stations using pre-existing businesses, which helps supplement their income, but also get the packages delivered more time. So sounds like a good idea to me. See how it works out. I'll keep you updated.
Do you think it'll result in any new jobs?
It's possible. The way they're setting it up is you have to be in existing business for, I think, maybe a year, nine months to a year, somewhere in there. And then their hope is that once you have signed up and she can, you can vet your own drivers for delivery. And so potentially you could have as many or as few drivers as you want, but you're only delivering within ten mile radius of your business address. So probably won't need a lot. But they are planning, the last I heard is they wanted five businesses to place papers before they could officially launch the program. Potential for a couple of employees. We have a couple of bits coming up later this month and then next month, July, end of July, we're having the joint chamber mixer with Buckingham with the Van Chamber. So we're gonna meet at the tack house bird. That's gonna be July twenty-six, five, seven PM. August third, we have been gracious enough to allow us to use this office again for the first holiday happening joint meeting. Excuse me, excuse me. Yeah, August twenty-first. The third, which I have written down right next to that, is the grand opening ribbon cutting pursuit tentatively.
I thought it looks like the time on Thursday. I'm definitely, they definitely weren't eleven o'clock on Saturday, eleven o'clock.
All right, make it happen. And then we're getting ready. We just, we just had our monthly board meeting for the chamber. Next update that comes out, newsletter that comes out from the chamber will have a option to spot to click and nominate the citizen of the year. We haven't done that in a couple of years now, since maybe five years now, twenty nineteen. So yeah, we put a real damper on, on that. And we're trying to resurrect that. So definitely read your newsletter and we're gonna be nominating during, get the electronic option to nominate, but we'll also have paper versions. I'll send out an attachment and email to follow up for folks that might want to print it. And then we will announce the citizen of the year at the annual dinner at the end of September, early October. And even dates be determined. But that's, that's the highlights for, for this month.
Where did you go for drinks?
No, but I would like to recognize the chamber and thank them for donating water for the cooling station, both them and Tiger Market.
Nobody wants to get in there. Jack added all of you.
All bounces the other. We appreciate your support and the support of the entire group. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We are reading. We did not read this book. Mr. Mayor, a number of things from the planning commission. One is we are continuing to make progress on the comp plan. There will be a meeting next week. The planning commissioners will meet. We're clinging to a section of the comp plan. And so that project is moving forward, which is good. We had a part of the meeting where we talked about minutes. And you may remember a couple of months ago, I brought up minutes here and it's good that we clarified as a council, it's kind of our own understanding. But at the moment, there was some dissatisfaction brought forward from the planning commission. Because we didn't have minutes that day. So maybe one thing I would like to present from the planning commission is whatever priority we have as a council, we make those minutes the top priority. I know Javier and I've talked about it since then. I'm excited to have our person who's gonna be here for an internship helping out. Couldn't see you. But what's that? Julia, yeah, Julia. And but coming back to this issue, so the council, it's helpful to understand there was, there was frustration on the planning commission side because those minutes weren't there. It was something that hampered the meeting and not having those minutes. I think, how do you, if you want to comment on just where we are, I know, I know there's a priority process we've got.
I think we spent the last two months prioritizing financials, leading up. And then kind of vocalized that we wrapped up the, well, we wrapped up preparations on the fiscal year relatively late. We left that meeting kind of speaking about that we're looking out that summer in general to help us with a little bit of catch up after events. And one of the commissioners also has some free time that they were willing to volunteer. So Molly, I could buy was sit down, stop by the tent. And then our meeting, helping out Mondays and Tuesdays, about five hours. I've always been leaving reviews usually out of the Fourth of July. We were, well, we're definitely slower. Like you mentioned, we expressed it as a priority and wanted to share that with council. And then the council has also expressed that it was important to go.
I, I think the thing I would maybe say to council is if we agree, I think it would be good to simply say by the time of the planning commission meeting, the first week of August, the minutes that are needed for that meeting are there. That would be, is that okay? We prioritize that with the.
Why don't you explain what's involved in the meeting, that deadline? Just, it's not impossible to tell. If it is possible, tell us.
I think if my, we were behind on four months, including last one, or this last meeting last week. So if we had an intern take a week or two with the volunteer and that's their priority period, I think we should be able to catch up on those four months.
And I don't know, so, so many people, you know, whenever I walk into this office, whenever we talk around this table, there's a million things going on in this town. From street sweepers to competing budgetary priorities to whatever. And I think it's really difficult. And I'm not surprised that minutes sort of fall to the bottom. I think we've discussed this before. And we're just gonna have to all be flexible and accommodating. I think budget season was tough. And getting the financials back in order has been difficult. And I'm assuming that it's wrapping up, but I don't know what's gonna hit the fan on any given day, let alone what staff is gonna see on any given day. So I think we all just have to be aware and support staff and just be flexible. That's all I, we've come.
Appreciate that. And Mr. Mayor, I have a question for you slightly out of order. Our chair for the planning commission happens to be here. I wanted to see, is it okay to see if you might want to comment?
So you have anything you want to add to the report?
I'm, I'm in issue with the minutes.
I'm in issue with the minutes.
You're the chair. I mean, if you have anything on your mind, now's the time to get it off.
You got the floor.
I, I would say that I hate three minutes and my board of scans here today and looking at me wondering where the minutes are for the meeting that we had last month. And I need to get those minutes in. Our meeting is Thursday. So yes, they should be done already. Some apologies to my board. I don't like doing them. You don't like doing that. But it's really not that hard. You, you know, you as you're sitting in the meeting, and this is what I do when I'm, when I'm preparing to pick minutes, I'm scribbling notes. And then when I get to my computer, you could do voice to text. I mean, you could literally narrate what you've written and it happens fairly quickly. And then that's it. You're done. You don't have to think about it again. So at this point in time, we're three minutes from November twenty twenty-three. And that's, you know, that's hard for me to say. I don't, I don't know. I just, I, I think it's not fun. Nobody likes to do it, but it has to be done. And, and it hampers us when we don't have minutes. When we sit down and talk about what has happened in the past meetings and we don't have those minutes to reflect on.
Don't people take note of their own notes, please? And I can agree, write them on my sheets and then bring the last sheet from the last meeting to the next one, just in case there's any, right? They're not part of just working as a team, I guess.
I mean, yeah, we could, we could go back and forth. We should do this, we should do that. And it's not a priority. It is a priority. But you know, I feel like it's something that we owe the town. You know, you can say you can watch the YouTube video, but the YouTube video is three hours long in some cases. We just had technological difficulties last week where the YouTube video cut off half week of our meeting. So there is no video. So I can't say to the constituents, go over YouTube and look at our chat. I don't know. I mean, like, I, I'm telling you, I'm not for less than minutes. I'm not. And and I don't want to be as a force trying to get the light. We just need to do it. Like, we just need to prioritize it, get the old ones done. I'm not, I'm not talking about the last month or the last two months. It sucks. No one wants to do them, but we just have to.
Do you go back to November twenty twenty-three?
We need.
I mean, did it come up where you needed minutes from November twenty twenty-three of the last? Do you go back to that though? I mean, I understand and I'm not trying to put you on the defensive, really. I'm just trying to understand how you use them. Because I know for me personally, I don't go back to December or January or February.
No, I think the last time town council discussed this, it was recognized that there is a legal obligation to do minutes. They share the seat or to know like, yeah, I need to be on by this stage. I don't care. I mean, use the town council to decide what he wants to do. Clearly, it's a bigger deal than me than it is to everyone else sitting at that table. So do what I'm willing to. That's just my piece.
No, clearly you're right. We, you know, there is an obligation, but there seems to be some kind of problem. And I I just don't believe that it's not for lack of trying. It's just because of competing priorities, right? And that's the problem with any of us, right? With busy lives. So.
Yeah, and it's not a fun thing. And I agree with you. I can see why it gets shifted to the bottom of the pile. But the longer you take to do it, the further it is from your mind, the harder it is for us to say, did this actually happen in the meeting? I don't recall. I mean, it just, it like, it just becomes a bigger deal than it needs to be.
Gotcha. Okay, noted.
We discussed the meeting also starting with the motion. That's most useful. And then I think that.
That's why I was asking the question about November, December, January. Me personally, I would never look back unless there was an issue where we were discussing something, bringing it back forward.
Yeah, we'll mention catch up. Cause you will use that, you know, three years from now, if you have some motion.
Right, right. Historically, I can understand the context. But did, so they didn't have the minutes from the prior meeting, though. Is that what it was? The recent ones were not in place. Okay.
And actually, I was out that meeting. So it would've been nice to have it in that case, but we did cancel one meeting because we didn't have minutes.
I recall.
Yeah, and I, and I, people need insurance and we get, you know, need the minutes in sight. And if it was last year, I got judged.
Okay, thank you.
With the button being done and a couple of extra hands in the office for the next foreseeable few weeks, so maybe we can get everything called up.
Yes, a little bit more. So thank you, Chair. And I, I just wanted to make sure the council had a chance to try and explain that. Or I do thank the council a few months ago as we took the time to address the issue. And I think it's helpful again to hear how people understand it. And thank you for your thoughts. Last thing to mention is we have a vacancy on the planning commission. There was an applicant that many of us are familiar with, Josh Peck, who was at the meeting last week and the planning commission recommended Josh. And it's acceptable from what we understand to be a representative of the planning mission and the architectural review board. And Josh, having been a town councilor, having been a planning commissioner, it seems like would be a really good fit for that position and the planning commission recommending him for a job.
They have Javier to see that we tend to that matter next month. Mr. Mayor. The Hysen is not with us, but he has sent a report to each of us and that's available in your email if you choose to read it. Emergency preparedness.
While we're on summer schedule, we're meeting once a month instead of twice a month. So we haven't had a recent meeting. But as I said, and as you remember from last time, council approved a third team to be established and have a relationship with the town. Jack has put teams together. There's a four teams of three, Jack?
Yeah, five teams three.
Five teams of four. Okay, so five teams of three, two of which were participating in July fourth. So that's already been activated and has helped the town in different ways. Water was donated, as I mentioned, from both the chamber and Tiger Market. Thank you again to both those organizations. SERC set up a cooling station in the town office. Thirty-two or approximately thirty-two people came in, cooled off, get water and whatnot. Jack has sent around a report with lessons learned. If anybody's interested, I'd be willing to share that. So, so your support on SERC is paying off. And we appreciate that support. I'm working right now on a grant, VDM grant for equipment and other things for emergency preparedness in several areas to help move our degree of capability forward somewhat. We have a meeting on Thursday to go over the edits. Hopefully I'll have a completed draft by We have a meeting on Thursday to go over the edits, hopefully I'll have the completed draft by then. But I do have a lot of texts that I've been fiddling around with, so, um, we have the review team that will look at that. That's due on the nineteenth. Of July, so we're, we're a little close, but with summer schedules and vacations and holidays and things being where they are. I don't think we could do much better. And then lastly, we're gonna talk about this later, about the E nine-one-one ordinance, I'd like to speak to you all and brief you on a proposed ordinance. For mandatory E nine-one-one signs in town. And those are the highlights.
Thank you, have you anything to add to urgency preparedness that you? No, in that area before. Well, I tried to make these a bit late, but yeah, it's next Thursday, four o'clock.
Is that? At the four, Joe? These, uh, our next incomplete meeting, th- this Thursday at four?
Uh, I'm seeing.
Now, sorry, I, I don't have, I, I go day by day on my calendar, so. VDM meeting is at one. It should be on your calendar, but okay.
And, um, I keep in touch with, uh, keep keeping, uh, reservations to be still, yeah. So thank you to you all, it's very nice, so again, thank you to.
Eighteen point three.
I guess what provides the news, what we use, it gives us parts of recreation.
Okay, I missed that one thing that's not related, but I did want to, um, I did take note. Of, um, in the grant area, I don't know if you all noticed that Luisa just got a two-point-five, I think, million-dollar grant for sidewalk repairs. And we just talked about sidewalk repairs here in town, so we should really keep an eye on these grants. Um, because that's gonna be very, very beneficial, as you know, so, uh. Just a bit of FYI, sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Meredith's not here, um. Lockwork couldn't be much better than it was. James mentioned holiday happenings, uh, I have this space reserved for some point in the day of August twenty-first, which is a Wednesday. And we're trying to put the chambers goal with all the people that are involved with holiday happenings. To warn us at whatever time we decide to have the meeting and stuff. What time?
Eight here.
Okay, eight-thirty on the twenty-first. And we'll, uh. Of August. Uh, anyhow, we wanted to get a, get ahead of the game with holiday happenings, it was, uh, it was a good event last year, but we'll probably make a better this year, so. That's, that's all the talent. Uh, Javier, you have a personal report.
Yeah, so written on the board that I presented, I deserve a board on the back page of our agenda. Um, what I wanted to check in was if, uh, Melanie sent out an email following up with. Council that question for the, 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 or annual audits. I wanted to touch base with council and see if they had questions following that email, but we tried to capture most of the information.
What's your position at this point with the auditors? Are we sort of thinking to stick with who we have? Yeah, that's the notion I got from the. From going through your briefing, that there were some. Things on both sides that probably.
Some things that we didn't know, um, we didn't realize that they were. Were considered independent auditors, so they can't give us. Just say cleaning, they can't clean accounts or take care of accounts or anything like that. The only thing they can do is just audit our report, make sure that we're in compliance. So much of the audit has to do with. Our GAF reports, is it general accounting? And what those are like has to do with our retirement, our insurance, and our pension. And out of that report that they gave, that thirty-page report, only three pages of it was on our. Financial, everything else was to do with the rest of it. And if those reports don't come in at the time we have them, then they cannot finish our audits.
And I guess stuck in the pipeline, then looking back, they've been delayed from the state level, which I'm sure.
Yeah, it sounded like they had some reasonable responses to our concerns.
And then I think there was a recommitment of expectations too. So, for example, January, we're on our timeline to have two staff days where they got a real face when they. Uh, in our office to do the audit, they could, January coming with a presentation for town council, which feels. The note already paid, which is the one, it should be something they, they're presenting to us, so. And then beyond that is included in the, you know, very small opportunity, uh, for our auditors to ask questions so that. Uh, we can, we as staff can be diligent throughout the year, uh, so we aren't, uh. Catching some, you know, fourth quarter, that, that dressing things earlier. Then you're related to the year and staff, some of that. Um, and then we've discussed, uh, wrapping up last year, have to check again, six months. Whenever I start hiding, if we retire, um. In our town staff, so that might be an opportunity to say, oh, how satisfied do we feel with our audit this year? Either continue with them or what our original intentions would be, which would be to, uh, report, I guess, put it that way. Um, and then the second, uh, Melanie was working on kind of the, the summerings. So change to the profit and loss report, uh, we shared it, I think, two weeks ago with. And then we wanted to afford this one section of an opportunity, we've ended it to some members. When they're in office, they have a paper copy, but to see if there was any questions or requests about. Any improvements, any. Any different formatting that would be more useful for our members. We have the line, uh, number.
Yeah, line numbers on the left-hand side, that's good. That way we can refer from across communicating page numbers and line numbers, so it helps them. Page three, line three, three hundred, whatever.
We can try that with, uh, maybe we'll still present that two guys.
Is there any way to get, like, I know, we've talked about this, but not for a few months, about a visual summary, kind of of where we are. High-charged graphs or some executive summary that's not. As dense as this, just so you get a cursory glance and can drill down.
We played around with those a little bit, we can play around with them.
I think it'll be a lot easier once we start the new. Budget, because everything was getting, I mean, it conglomerated and it. Need to get itself confused when I'm just trying to put the graphs in. So I think until, like, until we get to a new one, July's, I think we'll be, we'll be able to do something with those charts.
And we're all migrated into the QuickBooks online now, right? So, and they have a provision, I'm assuming, for some kind of summaries or charts. Or things like that, that you can.
Not charts, but, but some, so you have some.
Okay. Alright, so we're limited by what they provide.
I mean, if we're gonna put another two hundred of those into the. Program. Per month. Then, you know.
I see, you have better capabilities.
To get better capabilities, but.
Yeah, maybe. Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Alright, um. These have been the last couple of weeks for me, um. I have talked with the, uh, the law firms, you know. Move on, uh, is it water seal? Yes, yes. Uh, they've been having some issues with, uh, a shrubbery that blocks their view when trying to get out on the Valley Street and also with. Delivery trucks at Doug's that seem to be blocking not only a lane of traffic, but. Vision of non-bound vehicles. So we've had a discussion about that and, uh, we are going to, uh. Used to be a sign there, it said do not block intersection, no U-turn, I guess, see if we can put those signs back up and see, see what happens. Um, as James reported, uh, I met with Mr. Patel, the new owner of the Goco, and we arranged for and has his grand opening and, uh. Ribbon cutting, and I was unable to be there because I was at Judy Brown's memorial service, as you should know, but. Judy passed away the day after we had the Boys and Girls Club have the birthday party. And I, at that party, I did have the opportunity to speak and also, uh, met and spoke to a while the Senator of the Tins. Well, Javier told me that the, uh, he's been informed that our. Scottsdale side on the south side of the river coming into town is in band need of repairs, and we're looking into, uh. Uh, what we can do and how much it would cost to fix that. On the, a couple of days, well, a week before, of course. Four weeks before July fourth, I was meeting with Javier, Reginald, and Jam and. Just sort of making sure that they had what they needed to, uh, see that we had the success of our work, which we did. Uh, on July the fourth, uh, Mr. Chris Payne and Dan and his friends, Jordan and Javier and Jam and I all participated in the parade. And, uh, those of you who weren't there, I, I'm, I'm. Good excuses for not being there, so we missed having you with us anyhow, and Melanie and, uh. Her husband sat on the back of the town truck and, uh, threw out candy. And, uh, like Mr. Payne said, it demonstrated to the town the need for a new town truck. Ten thousand people, as, as one or two, and said, they can do that. Yes, sir. And again, as, as James reported, I, uh. Met with the owners of Sue's over here, um, a couple of times this past week and, uh, they did join the chamber. And we do have their, depending on August third, as I mentioned, uh, mentioned the holiday happenings meeting coming up in August. I met with Chief, uh, on the fifth of July and Mr. Anderson from, uh, One Main Security. And has sort of a debriefing on the activities of previous day. And, uh, even though Mr. Anderson provided four people, I think he only charged us two, except for it. We paid people, yeah, we paid the, the, the guys of our hearts. He's got a good organization and he's going to, um, arrange to bring some of his people down here and run traffic control. It's a dangerous job. People run over you in a flash. The cleanup crew that came at the end of the parade, they did an excellent job, uh. And I want to thank them for all they did. And then, um, each year on the fourth of July, Mr. Briscoe has a appointment for the international students from, uh, UVA. And he invited me over this year and I spoke to the group and, uh, we talked about, uh, forms of government and I had a very nice conversation with, uh. A gentleman from, uh, China, uh, he, he just finished his graduate work. And then saw some faces that I remember of administrators of, of previous years, so that was, uh, very nice afternoon. So that's basically, uh, was my last couple of weeks. Have any questions? We're glad to answer them. And if not, I'll ask Mr. Bowlin, if he's got anything electing part to us.
Just a couple of things, I, I helped with the E nine-one-one draft and. Pretty big community, so we have the power and authority to. And that, I was gonna put help and wants to do and it's, my consent for it, then, uh, that would be where they help. Then, uh, I, I see that the train station is, is rear, it's, it's head again, uh, Mr. Payne knows, that's, that's a subject that. How kind of aggressive was the force, um, unsuccessfully, and that could well be because it doesn't really. It's going to be very difficult to find a successful outcome to that. The railroad owns its train station, my, uh. Humble opinion, they're very unlikely to ride in the rescue and spend half a million plus, whatever it's gonna cost to renovate that thing. Uh, I suspect too that. The grants for train stations have gotten scarfed, given that everybody, a lot of, there's a lot of train stations and a lot of them got renovated in the past, but. It's probably slowed down by now, so you're between the rock and the hard place and, uh, some extent, you're going to be forced to, uh, appeal to, uh. Uh, the railroad's, uh. Better nature and, uh, uh, I'm, I'm not sure that how far that's going to get you either, but that may be. Literally what you're gonna have to do to save us. I suspect deep in their hearts, the railroad would like to tear them down. And, uh, they, they legally can do that. Although it's in a historical district, they first have to offer it for sale, town can buy it, uh. Then they wait a period of time as they set out in the statute and your architectural, uh, historical district provisions and then they can tear it down. So, well, it's, the picture is not, uh, uh, an enlightened one for.
Yeah, uh, back before Nancy was mayor, um, she and I went and talked with CSX about the train station. Because we had figures thinking of a, uh, sister center out of it, and they told us, no, it's too close to the river track. It's a liability problem, if people, if we're to get into it, they. It was just not safe, so, and we understood that, but we did try that angle.
Yeah, of them. Um, some of the old spaces I worked in on the competing railroads. Um, in Manassas, Copecle and Orange. Uh, these shelves go to a certain extent, um, Norfolk Southern Railway was my company. And they turned over to the town and, um, Copecle and Orange specifically. Use theirs as town business center.
The water farm was real harvest.
Yeah, uh, and so they're all over, but, um, it's not too close to the track, that was the whole intention, you know. You know, in fact, I hate to bore you with old stories, but I remember when the last pass the train pulled out of here. And eventually it was, you know, a truck, so that, that, I think it's still kind of. Pulling and letting down, but I doubt, I'm like, like Jim said, I doubt they would come across the name if I could find it.
I can't figure out a way, really, you can't shame them, but just you have to feel their corporate guy.
Would you just make enough to redo the exterior?
Yeah, one thing, one thing I will, I will say that, that, uh, former town, town councillor Bullock was. It was an issue that was kind of his issue, you might say, he brought it up frequently. And there were several meetings that we passed with the railroad and we did get some funding from those meetings, so I, one suggestion I have. Would be, I don't know that I desire to play the role that Zach did a few years ago, because he. That was his issue that he went after, but I think if we continue to have a dialogue with them, they were. Minimally receptive to some support, and that's how we got it in the first place, and so perhaps we could find a way to invite them again to come and talk to us. I forget the guy's name, but he came a couple of different times. It would be good for y'all to meet him.
But they put the, um, I call it the, the storage yard, quotation marks around it, it's still there. And you had a golden opportunity when they made a mistake and, uh, that hazardous waste on the storage site and then washed away the club and. At that point, you, you kind of had some leverage, but that's long past. Perhaps in some sort of event like that, I'm just fortunate, I'm just fortunate that, uh, there's, there's not too much you can do except to. Come up with a, uh, publicity campaign, which is beyond my skills to do.
Mister, Mister Bowlin's, and, and slight disagreement with you, I can't remember which Lord of the Rings movie they did, but they, they said something like, the wife was their best account for something. We have a town attorney who's, who's familiar with the issue and maybe as we look for. An opportunity, yeah, I, I do not, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to be a clean to the railroad, we appreciate that they do. Use the track at the same time. use the trap. At the same time, it occupies a key U shed of the town. It's very, that area down there is obscured by at times a lot of debris and things that are unfavorable to people in the town. It's not hidden. And I think go back to, uh again, I'll channel my inner councillor Bullock. I think it's wise about keeping conversation again with, I forget the guy's name, but
It may be a different guy.
Yeah, well, it's probably the same. He's been around a while.
You know, legally, there's there's you have, it could have some success by by litigating the issue of whether or not they can have a junkyard in the in the flood plain, but and there's been some success, I think, for City of Rota. But the trouble is going to be there's a uh not surprisingly, there's a special federal act that protects railroads. Uh in that case, if you get removed to federal court and it would be a battle. And I think you'd probably prevail, but you'd have legal fees.
We had a private citizen like a few years ago when I first started offer his land airborne ferry, just to get sex for like a dollar lease worth of it. If they'd be willing to take it out of Scottsville.
We wouldn't do it.
Well, I never offered, the conversation kind of ended by the time uh I got that offer.
Well, we, and again, we have this white wizard over here.
And that's, but that's not, that's a separate issue than the ground station that's getting ready to fall down.
Well, they're they're interrelated, this.
Well, I don't know. One's a, one's a lot easier to fix than one costs a lot less than half a million plus than the other.
Well, I think I I guess my point is I think it's good for us to seek a dialogue with them again and if Mr. Mayor, that's okay with you, we can find us, let's let's thank that contact and invite them to come. They have been willing to come.
We have had at least some good luck with dialogue and with VDOT and Javier's approach with Jam approaching for the streets we've run in. Personal relationships help. So I think having a conversation is not a bad idea to find out where they are.
The police and the council, I update you guys after I goes, they know where the street. Was that was that, maybe you remember it.
I I can't remember his name.
I can remember his face.
Oh, yeah, the tone, the tone, well, as everybody's told me, but uh when you're dealing with these railroads, uh I happen to work in a lot of the counties always Alexander to Jordan. And uh no counties just don't have that much power because it's interstate commerce. You know, that's that's all they have. That's the problem. They get all the exceptions. And they preach same thing. And uh I I think if we use that term as often as we can, we'll get to on it with.
Or a loose say uh help the CSX representative quite a bit, so I'll give her a call if ours you shoot.
And he might be hitting something because when I was, you know, I was still getting a second opinion on the status of it, but I was getting pointed out that the last few years, the roof is sacred, maybe it has become a safety issue. Craters getting in there and that's a safety issue. So maybe you start thinking around now.
Anything else, Mr. Bowling?
That's all I know.
Any questions, Mr. Bowling?
All right, town administrator, uh report and where do you uh y'all been to? Would you introduce our summer intern?
Yeah, would you mind stepping up then? Yes. Oh, yeah, my name is Julio de Durges. What's that? What did he start? Oh, oh, I see. Yeah, I guess. Yeah, so uh, yeah, I live in Scotts Hollow, and um maybe uh I can get a little experience, um you know, where I'm just a bit of a small going and uh so I'm grateful for the opportunity.
I really appreciate his initiative. We reached out to him in the spring, really interested, and I think he saw the opportunity that's all that matters. Learned a lot, so I think at least what I can share along with him is uh the unique situation in Scottsville where he touched everything. He's been in twice a week, uh or he's doing two days on uh through August. I'm hoping I can give parts of information to him. And uh as he's, you're rising forth here?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I see. Um I'm glad I'm here. It's pretty plenty and I got compliments for others, so I think we got it. Um so I'll just read off of our uh competition report that I shared with the guys. We already received a lot of updates about the Black Forest Celebration uh between the mayor and the police chief. Uh I just want to reinforce that we've uh very grateful to our main staff member this year for a very long day and very dedicated during the day. Uh we got a lot of community members come in, so it's kind of a day for us to show off and uh keep the town tidy. I think we got nine food trucks slash tents and then we got music from one thirty until dusk with fireworks. And then we use upstairs, which I was ready to uh get our max on this team and we're cooling center. And then Melanie was uh with Meredith where we're the origin of crafts and during the year. So that's some steady uh flowing and out and people cooling off in spite of two waves of storms. I think we had some good attendance to bring down, so um I won't get into any more details, but uh I think we got to do a book for tomorrow. Beyond that, I wanted to share that uh as always, I sometimes uh want to share comments from community members who come into our office. Um we all know that we are now missing a breakfast place. And I, you remember who's threatened that. I can be an ambassador to anyone in the future. Uh try and find you a breakfast place or a town council, you know, as he put it very politely. I know it's not your job, but also who else happens? Um so, you know, we can pick up something to gas it, but it's not the same city to allow. So we got a missing, missing there.
What's going on? I'm sorry, Javier. What's going on with that? Do you know? Is it for sale? Is it?
Last time I spoke, he just spoke about closing and I wasn't given a definitive answer on any opportunities to rent out because he's sitting on commercial stakes with relatively new equipment. Um but I kept him as contact and as always, uh I try to point business towards business uh in town, but I I asked the same thing. You you had a luxury space rent? You wanted to, you didn't want to run it yourself, but.
Well, Hollis is, it's easy to approach. Just give him a call.
Oh, that's uh.
Yeah, they bought it.
Three years ago.
Yeah.
He's gone, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um but I at least I caught up with.
But he's not, he's not running the place now, right?
No, they closed it. Three weeks ago, four months.
Almost a month, yeah.
Does he still have the motel there?
Uh, no.
Everything.
Really? I heard there were people at the top of them. It's interesting.
There's a little car parked there off and on. It's hours. I don't know if he's got somebody staying there just to watch the place or.
Things might have changed some conversations, right, when it happened?
Oh, yeah, I heard it somewhere that they were actually chained off the entrance.
Yeah.
And uh I think we ought to have something saved. I've had so much takes a one hour morning turn into a chain that used to, you know, talking a lot to turn around. That could be something the people see.
Yeah, so I spoke with uh the owner, uh with the police chief and me, thinking most as safety, keeping people out because, you know, no business. Um but you bring up a point that maybe I'll reach out to them and see anything that can do with that chain to bring some more visibility. Maybe some eyes is something you can stick on and wear paint on it. But I'll follow up with that because yeah, I'm already seeing that happen, we want to admit.
Yeah, thanks. It's for sale.
Yeah, he had a gentleman on sale when I asked that too.
He invested a lot into it when he bought it.
It doesn't make any sense.
If you invest, uh that one uh enclose the business inside of it, you probably want to offload it.
Well, that's I would think you'd at least want to rent it, but.
Continuing, I think it's sufficient to split over. We talked during the attorney report on an email I forwarded regarding the uh train station. Uh the last piece I wanted to inform you guys on was that I was informed six twenty seven by SCAM that the first floor AC unit, which is separate from the one for the one we're enjoying right now, is on the second floor, uh was having issue with the water. So Becco showed up Monday of last week. Um we did an inspection, but they were found is that uh a previous uh staff member had uh put in a uh incorrect sized filter and the filter had gotten dirty. Uh the unit would freeze up, thaw and leave water that uh also cracked the drain pan that's under the device. So I spoke with Becco about uh the device is from twenty fourteen, so it's that's any durable, it's starting to go towards the end of its life cycle. But I wanted to share with council since uh uh I appreciate providing transparency to you guys to get the work done at least on recharging AC units, replacing the filter and getting a new drain pan, uh which the toll is provided here, but I also wanted to put an end in it and point out that uh the years of service on that device will be drawing close. So future fiscal years, we might want to consider a first floor AC unit. It should be, you know, we have two more years out.
What's the state of second floor?
Um that's a new.
New one, right? That was a good place a few years ago.
Yeah.
What what did the second floor cost? Twenty eight thousand.
Yeah, twenty eight thousand.
Which was about eighteen thousand, too much, but they had pretty trucks. That's always important.
The other thing I'll say about that is just make sure you push up price. This thing won't add add stuff really quickly.
So I'll sort of, something. So as always, I was practicing last year, uh cooking post, so if you want to look at that point. I'll be sharing for the post.
It's not going to be cheap. It's probably going to be ten, you know, between ten fifteen thousand dollars.
But there's huge differences in price and you all have the geographic the ball. I wonder, can we put this out to bid?
No, he said he would.
You can put it out today if you want to, you know, definitely.
Well, I mean, it's a recall, of course, you put it out in the paper.
I would, you know, I thought it's safer to install it, get in quote guarantees, you know, warrant and probably run out after no more than five years. So on us.
Yeah, I'm thinking that we may as well gather and maybe put it a future festival, and I of course I'll share with you guys uh when it reaches a point the same as another project through posts. I have also found it would shop around for five.
Also, a good amount of local companies here too in Scottsville. Worth checking into.
Still have to be careful.
Throw one.
And we're looking at a lot of big expenses, not unlike other towns for aging infrastructure. We talk about revenue constantly needs to be a priority. We have a town truck, we have an HVAC system, we're in need of a generator. We've got a lot of things on that expenditure plate. We really need to be focusing on revenue.
Uh is there anything else on there? Uh that is, it's in regards to the town on there for.
Just ask. In addition to the generator, the led is still use some repairers, unfinished buildings, etc. Just a ballpark figure off the top of your head, what the things would have necessarily repair and generator replaced.
Yeah, so we're budgeting about fifteen thousand. I think I'm going to come in on it, so we're going to work. Spend fifteen thousand to get a generator replacement. Uh we last year bought, we need to get the doors replaced on this video. And that was about two thousand, some change for two thousand five hundred, half a foot. Uh and then the maintenance guy will give us a quarter of what we're in. We were just really kind of that appropriation last year. So the big item was the door. Um but I wanted to do is get the fence replaced around there and I wanted to come back to council and see if we could uh take that priority since I think I may come under the amount that uh the council appropriated. Also redo those fence, uh fences, rusting. Uh to work the top of it, we'll pass any of the bar wires and really do what it's supposed to be. Uh I haven't quoted all that yet. I want to first see uh where I land on that generator workshop.
Well, we're sensing there, they're like, cut it. Twenty five thousand will be close.
I think if I'm able to get a generator to ten, five, we're in. Uh but I wanted to check in with council prior to that, first talk about the generator, the doors and that was.
Part of these things that you're mentioning, Javier, are part of the VDM grant proposal. Do you want me to still include them or should I back those out?
Yes, because I think if we were to be successful with them, then I would discuss with council about what priorities would be taken with that margin of line. I just don't want to counter, but I don't have, I can't lend for it, but that will be an amazing advantage for us.
Jack, do you recall when award is on us, you know?
It didn't say.
Didn't say.
And let's do the next one.
Pardon?
Let's do that next one.
Do July nineteenth, next week.
They're governing, I think they're going to start on October first.
Right. This is, is this state grant? Some of this state.
A lot of those grants are all funded.
They're all funded through the government, yeah. But I think it's a state grant, I recall.
Hundred percent.
We haven't submitted to any.
Yeah, it would be, but we haven't received.
I haven't seen any specifications on a match. That's the advantage, right? It's not a bad, it's a state and they would fund the whole thing. Up to, what is it, two hundred and fifty thousand, I think, is the maximum? I think right now the proposal is at about a hundred and sixty thousand.
And then we thought about getting that gave a great time front, so you could do the smaller fence for kind of deeper fence. Uh but I haven't fitted the numbers yet, but it's it's on my heart with uh actually with the lighting super.
Any other questions for Javier? All right. Stan, who is your spokesperson?
One of the name out. Hi. Thank you so much for having me here. Uh I know you have a lot of competing priorities and interests and we're just one of them. Um so thank you so much for giving me the time to speak today. I am sharing this on behalf of Stevie, our board president. So I'm going to read, sorry for for lack of eye contact. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you. Many of you know, I am Stevie Leves, the current president of SCAM Scottsville Center for the Arts and the Natural Environment. I'm a resident of Savannah County, seven miles off of Route Six. I have a Scottsville address. I requested to address the council because I want to make you aware of what SCAM has brought and will continue to bring for as long as we're able to to this community. Most of us are well aware of SCAM's roots and history that includes, but is not limited to Mary Hardy, Bobby Turp with the magician Spencer, Nancy Gill, all founders and supporters of SCAM, even our current mayor Ron Smith has served SCAM. Without their vision, dedication and hard work, SCAM would not be here. Our mission is to create a space for the exploration of the natural environment through the arts. We are blessed to be living here in this place, the crystals of the great blue ridge on the shores of the horse shoe bends of the mighty James River, surrounded by peaceful pastoral landscapes rich in history that contributed to the making of this country. But more importantly, those of us who call Scottsville home make up a vast and diverse community of citizens that deeply love their town. What is SCAM? It is an organization dedicated to the natural environment and the arts. We do this through hosting events, providing for educational opportunities in the arts and putting art and design into the public realm. SCAM has an in-house educational community theater program, which along with members of the community, strategic partners like Persimetry players, has made Victory Hall a destination for Central Virginia Theater to give the citizens of our region an opportunity to experience. To give the citizens of our region an opportunity to experience art. And we are creating a public landscape to allow for anyone to learn about the environment, the arts and the intersection in between. We want to continue this rich heritage, believing that art elevates a community. We all strongly believe that Scottsville offers a perfect location and venue for this to occur. Our partner Persimetry Players, their president and longtime Scottsville resident, put together data for this presentation. That's this a passion. His heartfelt letter and graph are part of your handouts. We are grateful to Tom Green for his efforts and support of SCAN and his belief in our mission. He reports. Data collected by the Americans for the Arts Action Fund show the impacts the arts have on local economics. Nationally, the arts industry generates one hundred sixty six point three billion dollars in economic activity annually. It supports four point six million dollars. It generates twenty seven point five billion in government revenue. The average citizen spends thirty one dollars and forty seven cents per person, per event beyond the cost of admission. And is, and this is vital for income for local businesses. In the tri cities region and Richmond, not-for-profit organizations generated two hundred and eleven point seven million in economic activity. Five point nine million audience members added one hundred forty eight point four million dollars and in related spending. And generated thirty one point six million in local, state and government revenue and over ten thousand full-time jobs. Let us take a look at our, let us take a look locally at our own historic asset Victory Hall. In which we at SCAN have been able to make ten thousand dollars in capital improvements with state-of-the-art sound and light assistance. Not including what previous board members invested with earlier innovations. Locally, of the patrons. And previous attendees polled over half attended three or more performances. Of them, all reported taking their business to local establishments with the Michis, the Tavern and Tavern on the James is the most popular. As well as getting gas and convenience items at our local fuel stations. A third reported visiting more than three shops. Eighty seven percent reported visiting at least one or more. To be noted, we have no less than four theater performances a year and annual events like the Holiday Arts Market. Holiday Day, which we founded and which is now a community-wide event. We have hosted book lectures and the ever-popular Spirit Walk within the Scottsville Museum. We've held educational classes for children and adults in art, dance, music, theater, yoga. Friday afternoon movies for James River Boys and Girls Club, junior art show with Mayor Ron as the judge. Our streets gates in conjunction, conjunction with the James River Association. Our window exhibition at the old Dollar General covering what appeared as a blight in our downtown space. Which is now being used as a warehouse. Be assured that Doug's Maytag Appliance is great, appliance is grateful and have been tremendously cooperative. In that our art disguises his valuable inventory. There is no data to present on the use and projected value or resulting value of our main space known as the Scanland on Harrow Street. We have, however, cleared and removed trash and debris from the abandoned pasture from retirees to barn floor fencing. We forested the area with well over one hundred native Virginia trees. We have identified and archived hundreds of native Virginia flora and fauna. We have brought the pond back to health, protecting it with a riparian border. And we are proud to say we now have documented the presence of our Virginia Bluegill. On the land, we have sculpture exhibits, marble signage, we have cleared a natural amphitheater for future development. Cutting clear trails that walkers, hikers and nature lovers can explore. It's now possible for a person to walk from town, starting on the bank lead and reach the Scanland trails. And return without ever being threatened by traffic, and that is just phase one. We have a very full roster of strategic partners that include the town of Scottsville, local businesses, including James River Brewery, Hardware Hills, Candy Farms. Nealon Farm, Chamber of Commerce, Bays Coffee, Regrow, Baked on the James Bartlett Trees, Wild Ginger Farm. Siller Pollinators, Precision Estates and Clean Latrine. Organizations like the Scottsville Museum, Charlottesville Ballet, James River Boys and Girls Club, Scottsville Elementary. James River Associates, Levanna Arts Council, W N R M, Scottsville Monthly. Charlottesville Department of Tourism and Attraction, Virginia Department of Transportation, the Army Corps of Engineers, Persimetry Players. Lynchburg Mycological Society, University of Virginia Legal Clinic, Piedmont Master Gardeners and Piedmont Piedmont Master Naturalists, all supporters. And I know I've not listed them all. We have a mailing list of seven hundred and fifty-two supporters, one hundred volunteers, not to mention our artists, performers, creatives and teachers. But let me get to the point. SCAN is a not-for-profit, totally dependent upon grant funding and donations. Most of our funding is restricted to specific projects like the ten thousand dollars for capital improvement we need to make your hall. None of which could be used for any other reason. Restricted. More examples, the restricted funding from the Virginia Outdoor Foundation for the Scanland Phase One Development Plan. The Pram and Rants that provided the murals, the window exhibits, the sidewalk drawings. Including the new mural at the Levanna side entrance corridor that was just completed. Even our angel donor who provided us with large amounts, larger than our typical twenty-five or fifty-dollar one-time donations, may know that their donation is for special projects like an art center. Or for promotion of some event or improvement on the land, not to be spent on operations. Our operating budget is currently ten thousand dollars a year, covering the cost of rent, insurance, cleaning, pest control, utilities. Landscape maintenance and property tax. We do not see unrestricted cleansing coming in anytime soon for this time of inflation and social unrest. Pre-COVID, we had a church that rented Victory Hall that covered some of our rent. Since COVID and then leaving, everything has skyrocketed, but we have a plan. We've developed a business plan that calls for expanding our rentals. More events and upping performances to six in twenty twenty-five. Organized fundraisers, better coordination of volunteers, recruiting new board members and more volunteers. Please refer to the enclosed rap cards. Rap card. So what are we asking? We, the board of SCAN, is asking that you do what you agreed to do, to sit down with us and negotiate the terms of our lease agreement. It is to be scheduled thirty days prior to the end of our lease date. That date has come and gone. As a result, we have continued to pay our rent on time, make repairs, arrange for cleaning, pay all utilities and insurance without an agreement. I propose that you give six more months under our current terms. A rollover, if you will, to implement our new strategic business plan. And on December tw- December first, twenty twenty-four, we sit down with the numbers and data to renegotiate the terms of our agreement. Till then, the current agreement rolls over and business as usual. And please remember, as you review this issue, there are new developments and businesses happening right now in town. And even though I have no data to support this, I'm putting the future of SCAN. That part of the reason El Capitó, Sue, Tiger Fuels have chosen Scottsville. And as their investment involved because of our. Investment involvement in culture, nature and the arts. Thank you.
Questions for us?
Where's Kenny?
Where we at, Tom, I suppose?
Um, I think it's pretty impressive. That they have twenty-five respondents, so that is a good statistical. Amount, but do you think that? That promotes the idea of us having more vibrancy in town, which adds to more of the influence. Um, you can look at this from ways, what we're talking about is three thousand six hundred dollars. Uh going from three hundred to six hundred, um I think the church is paying us four hundred, so they were covering most of the rent. Uh previously, pre-COVID, uh so that's a large subsidy. Uh which was helpful for SCAN.
Our intention for increasing is just. Cover our costs.
Yeah, it's pretty clear with council that we should be uh leading on that, we're using resources during our limited discussion. And uh.
Well, it was at six hundred at one point, this was my understanding, pre-COVID. And so through COVID, it went down and it was negotiated under map, I think, right? And so the discussion was about returning to pre-COVID rental. That was the cross of the discussion.
Good, that kind of sounds during that particular session.
You guys thinking about getting a rental month and then having a negotiation with them?
Well, let me take it a step back. One thing I would say, we've had some discussions as a council as to. What we want to do to help with nonprofits in town, and I think it's first of all. Clear to say that town has helped with SCAN for quite a while and that we've done a lot to help with SCAN. At the same time. We value, I think everybody up here highly values what SCAN does and. The opportunity that it needs both in the environmental things that SCAN does and also in the arts. What we are trying, what we need to figure out, we might say is how much can the town contribute, that's ultimately the question, you know? At the moment, the town was trying to, in the budget, determine how do we make up this thirty-six hundred dollars? In terms of what can we do, I think first of all, it's helpful, you know, I'm a Tom is. Somebody I coached against many times, for many years, and been a fan, you were on some of those teams, you were on some of those teams. So he. Has put together a lot of good information and when he said Stevie is really helpful. I think we need to have some more conversation as a council to to talk about this because when we had the conversation. I think it's clear, we didn't, at least I didn't fully weigh all that SCAN bring, so I think looking at what you're. Presenting is helpful. At the same time, I mean, as you say often, we got to figure out how we're gonna pay the bills, right? So, so we need to think through. How do we, as a town, be supportive of SCAN? And how do we pay the bills? And I think also this council itself, meaning this group of people that's here. We've not wrestled with that issue. It's been something that has been done in the past or been been in COVID. Some of the things that thankfully we worked together, but. This council, I think, needs to wrestle with the issue of how do we view this building and what that space means downstairs? And I I think it's really helpful that you brought these perspectives to us, to understand. But the economic impact, the arts impact, the environmental impact, there's a lot, there's a lot that's brought. Just SCAN brings to the table. At the same time, that's been long recognized in the town, so we have to work together on figuring out how do we do this? So I I'm not saying, I don't think I have an answer tonight, I, for my part, I would want to think about how do we address this?
I'm with good comments, so. I got involved with SCAN when I moved here, so I've been involved with them for seventeen years. I've been president, I've been treasurer, I've been secretary. And I think we all need to discuss it, I can provide some history at that discussion. So how the rent's gone up and down over the years because of different factors involved. So. The the only thing that bothers me at the moment is that we had many, many. Budget meetings, uh hammering out this new budget, we had public hearings and nobody from SCAN showed up. If there was, it was presented for months, several months, starting in March, we started presenting this budget and. And the increase in the SCAN rent was in the budget, which has been approved by the council. And it's the first time anybody from SCAN has been here.
Well, I know that um Stevie and Javier had touched base, but I don't think it was understood that we should participate in those meetings. Because I think we assumed our lease would be a separate conversation, not necessarily part of the budget conversation. I think there's just some.
Didn't have anything to do with lease, it had to do with public hearing on the budget. And if there's an item that affects your group and it's in the budget and there's a public hearing, a representative of that group should come and speak to it.
Yeah.
Or those club games spoke to us and they're not, they didn't, because we have a list outside and the budget can go to to them, they simply represent this. About the budget and public hearing.
Oh, so on on that point, I like, I I personally also didn't realize it was part of the discussion that I I had a little bit before. And and the path historically, um when I know about the discussions like built with the rent downstairs or the second voting conversation specifically on on the rental agreement. And I think we spoke at some of those, those which happened historically. Um, but like, uh that was just all, that was specifically on the rental agreement with SCAN downstairs. I didn't realize that for rental and they can now monthly offer the rental as a part of that funding discussion, I think if I had a lot of that.
And just just a, first of all, thank you and Mr. Mayor, thank you also, I. Maybe the easiest way to say this is we're, we're all new at the table, so speaking in this conversation, so. It's sometimes we as a town talk about things many times and people still appear it and other times we have communicated not, you know, goes both ways. But I mean, I I think that everybody at SCAN should know. We want to work with SCAN, I mean, it's just a matter of figuring out how do we, how do we do this in the budget and how do we? Think it through and. As Mayor said, you critically have known before, I think from your perspective, that you've known before. Yeah, so so since we didn't, at the same time, this gives us an opportunity. To talk about it and figure out what to do, and I do like the the forward thinking that's talked about in here. In terms of the more events and also thinking about how do we work with the theater itself. There may be some other opportunity that. Neither of us sees at the moment that could also help with the rent in some way, then that would be good and. Mr. Mayor, if you can have a quoting class here for us, and that would be a good one or something, but things to to consider, so. From my part, I think it's great presentation, it's really good, I think it's, it gives us something important to think about. Council, any thoughts you have?
I'm sitting here thinking right now. I uh I I'm familiar with SCAN and I didn't realize that they do as much as you do. Um, but still, I'll I'll take the position of of the mayor and the council. Um, it's money, money comes from the budget, the budget looks, it's covered, it's wide open and advertised. Anybody had a chance to come, I'm just sorry that that you all missed that. Um, it's been a separate item that we had in the past, like, you know, you were saying, you know. Uh, I'm not familiar with that part of the topic, you know. It comes from the budget, but I have seen, because it's post scaling of the. Um, that's where all the boys and girls go on. Money thing, we can, we can go back to what you said approved, I mean, the increase of rent is there. We've done so. Now, we can find a way to, I don't do this, I'll find them otherwise. I mean, what are we doing?
And there are choices. I mean, these are difficult economic times for everyone. Dan feels the pinch, the town feels the pinch. You heard tonight about HVAC systems and trucks and signs that need to be replaced. Money needs to come from somewhere, and some of these things were at a point where they are at end of life and we have to make tough decisions. And so there are times when we can support, you know, whatever um. Community organization helps lift us up. And then there's times when the town asks for support back from the community. This is right now, a very, very difficult time for us all. So. I'm not sure there's a great answer here. I appreciate all that SCAN brings to the table, that the financial realities are getting, are getting tough.
Council, you were, thank you, Councilor, you were saying that that's the best part, I like that job.
No, I'm just, I think stretching it out another couple of months, uh. Cause it's in the bill, but it's in the budget, I think we're gonna. Start with that.
Well, I go back to what Mayor does, right, is that, you know, the budget has been approved. This is what we told the community we're spending the money on and how things are going to be spent. To reverse that at this point is perhaps disingenuous.
So so let me ask a question, please. What was the, what is the intent for our lease? Because we don't have a lease right now, and the lease says thirty days notice, so does that mean that you intend the increase to begin July first, when the fiscal year begins? Or with any?
Or was it intended to begin August first? What was the plan on that?
So I followed up. In June with the president and then we discussed about having a presentation. But I wanted to get a little bit of the word to see if it's, and then this is a council decision. Um. But I've been proceeding on the lease, so. Well, council can't vote right now, so. Um. Just trying to get an attempt of a council that anything's changed.
What was that? One, one thing I, I want to. Maybe bring this up, maybe I would say this to one of my fellow town councillors. Let's, I mean, first of all, the fact of, I, I would say, let's not fault the fact of. Whether it's ours or theirs or our, whatever the miscommunication is, so to speak. SCAN is a very important. Entity and then Scottville that it may mean we have to, not mainly, I think we're going to need to resolve their whole decision with the budget. Unfortunately. Or trickier because we've had that before and at the same time as. Our chair of final commission is finding out. But time is it how do they have the time? And that's another thing. So in terms of being notified, there's a question about that. We're not trying to pull any fast ones. But anybody with sufficient time to figure out what to do.
Let's give thirty days. I can't make the decision, but hopefully next week I believe. But let's give the thirty days and a lease and then if you guys think of a number that's reasonable, never mind, so eighty-six hundred is reasonable. But maybe we can kind of cut the, uh. The difference out there.
So you're, so you say stay at thirty-three hundred for this month?
Yeah.
And then see if you have time to kind of figure out, let's communicate.
I think that's, I think it's a good idea. Let's try to work in a discussion that next week, that's Monday, or if you don't necessarily hold on.
Yeah.
Then let's just have a discussion amongst the council people at the public meeting next month.
And Mr. Mayor.
And if you wish to speak again, or somebody from SCAN wishes to speak again, we want to be able to recap. For those that weren't here, sorry.
Mm-hmm. And, and just to restate what he had said. This is a work session tonight and our. Public session, so it's like we talk, the next week is more of a session where people would come and talk. So we'd invite you to come again and see if in that conversation. Fortunately, I would be in another part of the world, but, um.
I would say a projected surplus at the end of this.
So, uh, with that late minute change we had in seventeen. To allow some more flexibility in regards to counting. We landed at forty-five thousand growth. But, um, as much as Stan's talking about Tarmac. Um. We also have a Tarmac also. A large chunk of that forty-five is catching up on that US crane grain. And it wants to submit in there. Um, I, I think it's good. I think it would be irresponsible in my position to not also tell council. We should spend this year also looking at. What budget priorities we have for next year, any opportunities of revenue, uh, just for the, uh. For the stewardship of the town. Just to take care of the town. So, thank you. Look, see somebody next week.
Okay, thank you. And, um, the letter from Tom Green, do you have that in your agenda packet? And is it worthwhile for us to read that into the, into the record tonight? Or do you, or you?
I think it's already part of the record. Okay.
I simply have to hold on to.
It's very helpful. It's very, it's very helpful.
Yeah, he did a great job with this depression. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys.
Sign ordinance for E nine.
Okay, you have in your packet a draft for the E nine-one-one sign. Sign of ordinance. So this would be the proposed. Ordinance for mandatory E nine-one-one signs on all properties in town. This is especially important given the Bird Street development, East Village development in the future. Um, you'll see several sections. Here, background, purpose. Um. There's specific recommendations on where signs should be placed. Depending on where the property is located in terms of along the road frontage. We've talked about ARB and approving the sign colors of. Green, uh, with white lettering. The one section that we did address and thank you to Mr. Bowling for reviewing this. Um, was such, um. Was it?
Reinforcement section.
Yeah. This penalty. Chief Jenkins has looked over this and given his comments. As I said, Mr. Bowling has graciously given his comments. The, um. I've looked at other towns, small towns, they have. There are many towns that have this ordinance on the books to have mandatory E nine-one-one signs to assist local first responders in finding properties. The, um. Penalty would be. Not less than five hundred dollars or more than twenty-five hundred dollars. For not having a sign. And you could, in lieu of that fine, uh. In lieu of the imposition of confinement in jail, the court may order the defendant to perform mandatory minimum. Of ten hours of community service in their abiding activities. So, uh, that was some of the purpose that, you know, Mr. Bowling recommended. Other towns have less, other towns have more. Uh, I'll leave it to council to consider. So the first question I think we have to ask ourselves is do we think. Would benefit the community to have mandatory E nine-one-one signs on the buildings? I think it's clear that Chief Hurstley, um. And Chief Jenkins felt that it would be beneficial. Um. And then looking through the sections on. The placement, we talked about the placement to the right or left of the door of historic properties in town. Or depending on where you were, how. Long your driveway is at the end of your driveway, et cetera. So there's specifications, anything for that. So I'd like to get the council's thoughts.
I notice, um. The one side, the one side of one. Seeing what the rest changes that the businesses or citizens will have to make.
Um, and Mr. Bowling, I mean, attached, you know, address, um. Applications at county level. And I haven't looked at, I don't assume so, but the thing that comes up in my mind, I mean. Are the properties that have multiple apartments. Right? And I think what we would specify, what we had thought is that not having a separate address. But having a separate E nine-one-one sign that indicates. The apartment. So you would have a main one for the front door with sometimes indicator that there's more. Uh, units in the building than what you see, like the We Grow Building across the street has apartments in the back. You would have an indicator that there are apartments and that would be. Whatever the number is, A, whatever the number is B, whatever the number is C, that they wouldn't have to change their physical address. And we'd have to train, um, we'd have to train residents on how to call. Right into nine-one-one and indicate their. You know, their actual address because in talking to Chief personally, what they'll do is they'll say, I'm at this address. But they don't tell them it's the back of the building. So they go to the front of the building only to find out the emergency is actually an apartment upstairs in the back of the building. And then they have to pull the truck around, et cetera, et cetera. So this has happened before.
No, it was, gosh. At least ten years ago, the camera came through and.
Right now.
Anything that didn't have in the garage, got in the garage, or they put it in the computer, so it. Emergency center gets a call of sixty-five, this is the street. Pull up my computer, there's a map, it goes inside the word is. Goes cottage, three miles, um, now another big valves, didn't have them all. Now, those is fifty-five, seventy-five, eleven, eighteen, sixteen at the start.
And this has a specification that if you have these ADUs, these alternative development, and, um. What is it? Where is at least the leave? Kind of dwelling units, I think, is that what you do? So if you had a mother-in-law suite in it. You know, apartment or shed in the backyard, that that would have to have its own separate. E nine-one-one sign with an indicator on the front property that there's another residence on the property.
And it goes. And I'm not, I'm not. Pardon or anything, I'm just wanting, I'm just trying to understand, actually, their driveway. And if you broke the driveway, it's fifty-five, seventy-five, and eighty-five. Seventy-five and eighty-five, the property line is nowhere near that, it's up on the top of the hill. So that's leading down at the corner, there's nothing sparking a lot, there's been four signs.
Most likely, I mean, we'd have to have. We would have to have your own marker at the beginning of the driveway of your property.
Which is. Come on. Play the possible property.
But where, where is yours?
Pardon?
You know, what I made for you.
So it's still sitting on my counter because my husband needs to put a post in it, but it would be.
And why would you put it?
At the end of my driveway. But ideally.
It wouldn't be seen from the road.
No, but ideally, there should be a marker at the road that there are four to, and, and four residences. On that private road. Now, we have the grant of five thousand dollars to start. With the historic properties in town. So we got that money and that we will provide that for the historic properties in town and no cost to the residents. We could try to go for a second grant to do the rest of the town. There are properties in town that already have them. So we're not expecting that, uh. In the entire town, that all the properties would have to be redone. But for those that aren't clear to first responders or those that do not have E nine-one-one signs, that they would have to. Install them. This says that they have a year. To comply with the ordinance, once the ordinance is passed.
We, we have a list called. So the one that are accepted, and they are the positive ones that are, so. Better. Have to get that. Finally, there'll be some files we can let students, they want to participate. So.
I don't know who does that. I mean, I don't know that that's their responsibility or.
Well, that's, you know, better ones who utilize it more than anybody else, so. Who would have really been out.
Oh, we have an inventory of the storage that's right.
ARB did that.
Yeah. So like we have a good, uh, list, for lack of a better term. Uh, it's state provided, state direction. Maybe it could be a staff project. Depends on what their time limits are, that's what I'm, but also their time limits, um. This is getting that input on which ones are good and which ones need to be purged. But the list that, that would be the hard part, but we have, you know, our storage district catalog.
Kind of agree. We're getting all rolling and we can say this is mandatory, they weren't mandatory. You know, some people don't like being told what to do, myself included.
Even other counties have done this. Savannah has done it for all the residents. Buckingham has done it for all the residents. This is not. You know, this is a matter of public safety.
We're not doing it for all the residents, so. Stand up to, probably move by a thousand dollars for all the residents here.
Right, but that, we can't get the county to do it for all the residents. I mean, Savannah County funded theirs, Buckingham County funded theirs. Albemarle County isn't funding theirs.
Can I ask a question about this?
Real quick.
Okay. Why would you change from, rest of this, why started off some of these signage and they were blue? Instead of green.
That's what ARB recommends.
Okay, but some of the signs weren't good purchased by these people, so you have to work there. Number two, how much money do you need if it was five thousand, how much total money do you need?
We applied for eight thousand dollars and it really was just for the signage themselves. And then we're assembling volunteers to actually go and help people. Pardon? Will eight thousand dollars? Will complete the capital for the signage only. So we're depending on volunteers to actually install or the homeowners themselves.
He's asking how much is overall, is it like?
Eight thousand was the project.
So you have five thousand covered though.
Yes. And so we decided to shut down.
Three to five thousand more.
Most likely, George.
Let me ask Mr. Bowling this. If this is a new ordinance, and we already got a ordinance about marking your house. Are we going to have competing, competing ordinances on how to put a number on your house?
Having looked at the old ordinance.
The old one says it has to be visible from the street, you know, it goes through all this except calling it an E nine-one-one sign.
Well, you need to coordinate it too, honestly. You could always add a catch all of this, same. With any case where the old ordinance is in conflict with the new. See, with any case in which the old ordinance is in conflict with the new, the ordinance controls. Add that sentence, that makes sense, so. But your point is well raised. Yeah, that needs to be looked at. When you look at it, that's a.
This is, uh, we can put this on next week, we're just one discussion, is that good? Next, next Monday, so that, you know, we want everybody to be here to discuss this. So that. You know, and Mayor, but can be here next week.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm, I'm a component of, um. Emergency services, being able to see, so, you know. Uh. My mayor, with the rural mayor career, and I work for the rest, it's fallen out, seeing this better configuration soon. That's, and every hour of the day, with all guys as well. So it's very important for these people that need to know where they're now to, um, that. It'd be, that'd be well taught, be with, with family. And really get through a situation with a multiple houses. Uh, particularly with the size. Uh, I paid two hundred as a site, and by the way, if somebody makes a net full expensive.
Yeah.
You see what you get. You get a piece of leather.
Yeah.
And your numbers, one, two, three.
Yeah, and you've got to feel those numbers off.
You feel a lot, you got one chance. Goes this way, you gotta put it down, you know. So it's, it's a lot, it's a lot to it, but the main thing is to, to board over the PMS. And so, please, borrow the. Get with eight, you know. And. Something that's not too, uh, cluttered, I know it. But it's a, it's a new project.
Yeah, I was not a fan of the green. Especially on historic properties, the mayor proposed brown. And the council can override that color choice. Um, but I brought to council what was proposed by ARB.
Can we get a sample? Of the signs?
I haven't checked it yet. I'm waiting to see if. If council's going to approve this. And I'm not putting tons more time into it until I know we're actually going to implement. But I have been looking at things, so the signs that, like you did me, they were, that, that thing is this, right? I'm looking at something. That's a little bit bigger than that. I think it's about this big, but. I'm looking at something smaller and perhaps more decorative, especially for the historic ones in town. Not just kind of garish green, but maybe more of a forest green that might. Blend in more naturally with the, you know, the green space that we have in town and things like that. And have a little bit more decoration to be more appealing.
Yeah, with, you know, different types, buildings and dwellings. All that, with what it gets, something that's meaningful, I mean, would be important.
So that's for Monday, yeah, but all councils.
But that's, um.
But I just wanted to start to think.
Yeah, that was one of the things that she personally was. Was emphasized is that it's helpful when it's. Uniform. The sign looks the same, it's at the same location, they know where to look for it depending on the property class. And they can get there when seconds, as we well know, named by.
All right. That's something to think about for next week. One prayer, thanks to everybody.
Thank you.